Good afternoon, Brenda.
Okay. All right, I'm, I'm going to ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number three is minutes to consider and act upon the minutes of November fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, and November seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Um, I'm gonna second because, uh, uh, Nancy, uh, Select Woman, uh, Lefkowitz is, um, out of the country actually for work and she's going to try to sign up but not till later, so, uh, just wanted to make that announcement. Um, so I'm gonna second. Is there any questions or comments about the minutes?
None from me.
Okay, very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. Um, item number four, I just want to, um, for information purposes, uh, recognize, um, some resignations, um, Nelson North, uh, who is, uh, um, whose term, uh, was from eleven eighteen to eleven twenty-three. He, uh, resigned on November eleven twenty-twenty-one. Uh, land acquisition Jeffrey Galdezzi, uh, who was eleven nineteen to eleven twenty-three, resigned on November eleventh, twenty twenty-one. And Police and Fire Retirement Board, Thomas McCarthy, eleven nineteen to eleven twenty-two. He, uh, resigned on November twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. I just wanna thank these gentlemen for their service to our town and, uh, uh, we appreciate very much, uh, their service. I know it's a lot of volunteer hours and I just want to, um, thank them on behalf of the town of Fairfield.
Uh, I will join you in thanking them for all their work and effort, so thank you.
Thank you. Um, now, item number five are reappointments to hear and consider an act upon the following appointments, um. Do I have a motion to approve? Um, we have, um, Michael Allen of Northfield Road for a term of eleven twenty-one to eleven twenty-five. The Bike and Pedestrian Committee.
Brenda, would you like to do them all at once or do you wanna do them one by one?
Actually, that would be great. Um, and then, uh, for Flood and Erosion Board, we have Peter Whistle- Whiswell, Fairfield Beach Road from eleven twenty-one to eleven twenty-six. And for the Historic Commission, which requires RTM approval, we have George Clark of Old South Road as an alternate and Christopher Shea of Cross Highway. Uh, and we also have Mr. Bickers, um, Tr- uh, Trey Bickers for Land Acquisition Commission. Uh, these are reappointments. Do I, and do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And I'll second. And I know, um, I believe Mr. Allen is on, uh, Mr. Whiswell was going to try, but he did have an appointment. And we have Mr. Clark and, uh, I believe Chris Shea's on the line and I believe, uh, Trey Bickers called in as well. Um, gentlemen, do you have anything you'd like to, uh, to say before we, uh, we approve your reappointments?
This is Chris Shea speaking and I'd just like to, um, acknowledge your, um, guidance and efforts and be, on behalf of the town and, um, wanted to thank you very much for all of your efforts and am, uh, grateful to accept a reappointment to the Historic District Commission.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you.
Yeah, hi, this is George Clark. I as well, I'm, I'm, I'm pleased to, uh, to be part of the Historic District and, uh, thank you for your leadership and, uh, uh, looking forward to, uh, participating with the HTC for the next few years. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Uh, I'd like to extend my appreciation to everybody for serving on these important commissions and for, uh, agreeing to continue to serve on them. It's, the continuity is important to a lot of the efforts that everybody's undergone, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Tom. Well, if there's no further, uh, comment, I just, uh, also would like to echo, uh, Selectman Flynn's comments. Thank you so much for stepping up again to serve. Obviously, our town has over three hundred board, uh, members on boards and commissions and it's a very vital to our community's, uh, success. So, thank you very much for stepping up to serve again. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen, uh, for coming on and I'll tell you what I tell everyone, um, you're free to stay, but you're free to leave too, if you'd like.
Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now, we're on to appointments, um, to hear and consider a pack, uh, to act upon the following appointments. Bike and Pedestrian Committee, um, Stephen, uh, is not available to us, uh, beyond because he has a work meeting. His term is eleven twenty-one to eleven twenty-five. He is replacing, uh, Keith Gallinelli, whose term expired. Uh, we have Mr. Keen who is on, Thomas Keen of the Old Post Road, who will, uh, replace, uh, Laura O'Brien. For the Fair TV Commission, which requires Board of Selectmen and RTM approval, Mr. Kraft is, uh, David Kraft, term from, um, seven twenty-one to seven twenty-four to fill the vacancy from Stuart Sessler and whose term expired. And Harbor Management Commission requires RTM approval. We have Don Hyman of Northfield Road, eleven twenty-one to eleven twenty-five to fill a vacancy for Ted Schwartzman. And Mr. Metcik, uh, Douglas Metcik, Old Field Road, eleven twenty-one to eleven twenty-five. This fills a vacancy created by, uh, Mark Fos- Foster, whose term expired. We have Mr. Perengini, um, from Fairfield Beach Road. This little term will run from eleven twenty-one to eleven twenty-five, fill in vacancy for Harry French. And Ms., uh, Jeffrey Warren from Parkwood Road. And he will be an alternate. He will replace Doug Metcik, who is moving to be a full member. And Land Acquisition, we have Cassandra Marshall, Judge Street. This term will run from eleven nineteen to eleven twenty-three. And Mr. Marobly, who is, uh, go- who is going to serve from, um, a term that expired from eleven twenty, he's gonna serve from eleven twenty-one to eleven twenty-five. And we have Robert Wilkins, Hillcrest Road from eleven twenty-one to eleven twenty-five. And we have Mr. Mr. Veris, Chris Veris, Fairchild Avenue, serving as an alternate from eleven twenty to eleven twenty-four to replace Nick Marobly, who's moving on to be a full member. And we have Thomas Collmore for Police and Fire Retirement Board, Red Oak Road, term from eleven nineteen to eleven twenty-two, replacing Thomas McCarthy, who's, uh, resigning to serve on the WPCA. And we have Mr. McCarthy, who on Lover's Lane from eleven twenty-one to eleven twenty-five to serve on uh, Water Pollution Control Authority. And Mr. Steiner, uh, Chris Steiner of Mill Plain Road, serving eleven twenty-one to eleven twenty-five to replace Christian, uh, Dockum, whose term expired. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Um, I'm going to offer, uh, any, that's a lot of appointments, but, um, I'm gonna offer, you have, uh, you, uh, who are on the call, who would like to make any comments or statements?
Yeah, Brenda, this is Bill Perigini, um, as communicated, uh, good, good afternoon. Um, we, we thank you for your leadership and guidance since your election. So much has transpired in our town, our country and world, and so thank you for, uh, thank you for, for doing such a great job at the helm. I'm eager for to, uh, and grateful for the appointment, eager to contribute to the mission of the Harbor Management Commission and thank you for your confidence in me.
Thank you for stepping up.
Tom Collmore here. I'll echo what Bill said. Thank you, Brenda. Appreciate it. Tom, I know you're on the phone as well. Uh, look forward to serving the town where I've, uh, spent my entire life.
Thank you, Tom.
Good afternoon. This is Don Hyman and I echo the, uh, comments of the gentleman that preceded me. We thank you for your leadership and your great communication skills and I look forward to, uh, having a chance to give back to the town that I love so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Doug Metcik. Uh, I'll also echo that. Thank you, uh, Brenda, Tom and others for your leadership and I really appreciate the opportunity to serve on this commission.
Thank you, Doug.
Brenda, this is, uh, Rob Wilkins, um, appointed to the Land Acquisition Commission. Uh, thank you for the opportunity. I'm really excited about it. There's a lot of work to do and, uh, it's gonna be fun.
Thank you, Robert.
Uh, Tom Keen, uh, just like to say, Brenda, thank you for, uh, having me on the, uh, the Bicycle and Pedestrian, uh, Committee. Uh, not so much on the bike end, but I have been walked back and forth to the train station in the dark of night, uh, in the dark of morn for many, many years. I, uh, hopefully can bring a lot of pedestrian, uh, aspects to that. So, uh, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. It's good to see you, Tom.
Brenda, seeing nobody else, I'd just like to, um, first of all, recognize the people whose terms have expired and are, are not moving forward for their efforts and their time on behalf of the town. Um, there has been done a, a lot of work, uh, by these various commissions over the last number of years and they're be, to be commended and thanked. A lot of times they serve in anonymity and they put in a lot of hours, um, and a lot of effort and their talents. For the new people, uh, coming on these boards and commissions, we look forward, I look forward to working with you. Uh, thanks for stepping up. Um, I've found being involved is very rewarding and I'm sure you will as well. Uh, there's a lot going on, whether it be on the retirement boards or, uh, harbor management most certainly, uh, and water protr- uh, pollution control, uh, most definitely, as we look at capital planning going forward. So, uh, look forward to your talent and your expertise on those boards and I wish you the best of luck and I hope you, uh, enjoy it at least half as much as I have and you'll be well rewarded for your efforts.
Thank you, Tom.
Um, I just, uh, wanted to note, Jennifer just said that, uh, Chris Verera is, um, on the line now. I guess he wasn't on earlier. Chris, did you wanna make any comments? Okay. Well, I, I too wanna thank you all. I know, um, there's so many appointments, like I said before. Um, and so it's, uh, it's good to have so many fine people, qualified people willing to step up and serve on these important, uh, commissions and boards and I just wanna offer, uh, my door is always open. Uh, my phone line is open. If you ever have any questions at all, if you wanna call me and ask me anything, I'm happy to, uh, be available. And I wanna, uh, again, uh, thank you very much for stepping up to serve our community. So we have our motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Get to, get to work, everybody.
I'll give you the same speech. You can stay on or you can, you're free to go.
Bye-bye.
All right, thanks so much.
Take care.
Gentlemen.
Thank you.
So, um, the next item is just for select woman appointments. These are for information only. No vote is required. Conservation Commission, Richard Bouche, uh, Boucher, Boucher, I'm sorry, Brownson Road, uh, term eleven eighteen to eleven twenty-three to replace Nelson North. And Mr. Fane, Jay Fane of Elm Street, he'll be an alternate. Uh, he will replace, uh, Mr. Boucher, um, who, who was, um, an alternate. And those, um, items are, uh, just for information purposes only. I know that Mr. Boucher couldn't be on the line, but, uh, we had a work conflict, but I think Jay Fane might be on.
Yes, uh, thank you very much, Jay Fane here. I actually worked with the Conservation Commission in various capacities since nineteen seventy-eight, but don't hold that against me.
When you were two, right?
I, I wish. Uh, I would be pleased to serve the commission and I, I, I realize the responsibility and I would, uh, approach it with a very balanced point of view. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Jay. You know, um, you know, I, I read your resume quite a while ago. But, uh, as you know, we had a lot of excitement in the Conservation Department, um, in exchanges, so, um, I, 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 you're very qualified and you have a lot of good experience that I think is gonna be extraordinarily helpful to the Conservation Commission. And then we have some very good members on there and, um, if you haven't already, I hope you, uh, have an opportunity to meet our new Conservation Director. He's really good, um, and he's been hitting the ground running.
Yeah, I spoke to him. He seems very knowledgeable.
Yes, he is. And, and you're gonna bring up quite a bit of wealth, uh, of knowledges as well to the commission. So thanks so much, uh, for, for your patience and for stepping up to serve.
Thank you.
All right, um, we have, um, also, um, I'm sorry, I also have, um, Mr. uh, Ganebus, uh, who is going to be, I think he's on our WebEx. He is replacing Dan Ford, who, um, resigned because he was elected to the Planning and Zoning. And he is going to be on the Parking Authority. His term will run from eleven nineteen to eleven twenty-four. And this is also, uh, a Board of Selectwoman appointment. Um, Michael, are you on the line?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, hi, Michael. How are you?
I'm doing well, thanks.
Thanks for joining us, um, and, uh, thanks for stepping up, uh, to serve on this, um, on this commission. It's an important one, obviously to the commuters, right?
Yeah, thanks, uh, thanks for the confidence in me and the appointment. Uh, as an aside, I am, I live not too far from Gould Manor and I'm look, I'm enjoying what we're waiting, uh, anxiously for the first pitch, you know, in, uh, April and May and playing some pickleball at some point in the near future, so thank you for all you're doing for, you know, my.
Do you play pickleball?
I do not, although I, I think at some point I'm approaching that age where it probably will be a, uh, a sport that I will, as, as these likes, can't work through tennis games anymore, but, uh, seems like it'd be a nice, it's gonna be a nice addition.
I've played, uh, with our pickleball people and it's actually a lot of fun. And you might wanna actually stay on because we're gonna be talking about Gould Manor. Um, so, if you're interested, you live nearby. Um, we're doing a lot of work there, obviously.
But thanks so much. I, I really, you know, it's, uh, I am a commuter and, you know, I, I, I joined the Parking Authority Board, uh, just hoping to do my best to, uh, to make your traveler's time in Fairfield and Southport as pleasant an experience as, as possible and, uh, looking forward to the, the opportunity and, and, uh, helping out any way that I can.
Thank you. I appreciate you stepping up, really. Tom, do you have any comments?
Uh, just congratulations and best of luck in, in your service. Thanks for stepping up to all of you.
You're welcome.
All right. So no vote is required on those, so I'm going to, uh, item number eight.
Um, Madam First Selectwoman, I'd like to make a motion to we, uh, waive the reading of the entire item and just ask that maybe you introduce it with the first paragraph.
Thank you very much because it's quite long. I will second that motion gladly. And, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Uh, so it's, uh, the first paragraph is to hear and consider and adopt a resolution amending and resti- restating the resolution entitled, "A Resolution Appropriating Nine Hundred Forty-Five Thousand for the Remediation of Historical Contaminants and the Enhancement of Recreation Facilities at Gould Manor Park and Authorizing the Issuance of Bonds to Finance Such Appropriation, To Increase, Increase the Appropriation and Bond Authorization By Four Hundred Fifty Thousand to a Total of One Million Three Hundred Ninety-Five Thousand Dollars." Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Thank you, Tom. Um, okay, so we do have, um, on this item, I have, uh, my Chief Administrative Officer, Tom Bremer, who has been working, um, on this, uh, the lead person in my administration on this item, is going to present, uh, this item and Attorney Stasram will be calling in approximately at four thirty. I'll hand it over to you, Mr. Bremer.
Okay, assuming you can all hear me, uh, I know that you've all received, uh, some background information and I just thought I'd give a very brief overview and then uh, answer any questions anyone has. Uh, basically, uh, we're asking for an additional four hundred fifty thousand dollar in authorization on the bonding, uh, to cover additional costs. Those costs are broken down into three groups. The first is, uh, uh, remediation costs. Uh, while reconstructing the ball fields, we discovered, uh, additional soil that needed to be, be replaced. Basically, the substructure under one of the fields was not, uh, properly built, I wanna say at least ten years ago, uh, which led to problems with drainage and that sort of thing. Um, when we decided to, uh, remove that substrate, uh, that was an additional charge because those, uh, uh, that, um, soil was, uh, part of the contaminated soil that we had to replace. So that, that, uh, increased our costs significantly to the tune of about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars when I add everything together. Um, the second area is, um, uh, what I would consider just additional costs, uh, slight overages on some of the different, um, uh, things we were planning to replace, such as, uh, the temporary fencing on the outfield. Uh, because the fields have all been replaced, then the temporary, as you may or may not know, uh, all the, uh, ball fields have, uh, temporary fencing to delineate the, uh, home run line, if you will. Um, that temporary fencing has basically outlived its useful life. And as well as when we rebuilt all the fields, that temporary fencing had to be rebuilt as well, meaning the po- uh, new posts had to be sunk in the ground and that sort of thing. So, when we go through the whole, uh, thing that was about thirty-five thousand dollars to replace that temporary fencing. And I just, I know this is all included in the backup, but I just wanted to, uh, point that, uh, be, point that one out because it's, it's such a large number. And finally, the third area is, uh, uh, shortly after it began, I went out to the fields and, uh, in looking around, I was struck by two things, uh, what I call park enhancements. Those two things were the perimeter fencing, that's not the fencing at the ball fields, uh, uh, specifically, it's the fencing around the park itself, the perimeter fencing around the park itself. Uh, it's pretty beat up. It's very old, uh, and uh, we thought it was best just to replace it all and it cost about fifty-five thousand dollars. Additionally, in standing there at one of the fields, there's a, uh, a bathroom, public bathroom that's there. Uh, it's scheduled to be redone by the town in the normal course of things about five years from now. Uh, I think four to five years. And in, in any event, standing there looking at it, it looks pretty beat up. It looks really old. Uh, so we got a price of seventy-five thousand dollars to have an outside contractor come in and not tear it down and rebuild it, but just basically change the facade, uh, rebuild the interior, uh, enhance, you know, rebuild the exterior so that it looks a lot better and functions better as well. Uh, those two things are about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Uh, these numbers that we're talking about, fifty-five and seventy-five are.
Somebody's, uh, typing with their microphone on. It's distracting. Could you just mute, please? Thanks.
You spoke before I could get to it. Uh,
It's okay.
My, my fifty-five and seventy-five, those are, we haven't touched them. Those are numbers that we, uh, have received and will be, and if we get a thor- uh, go, get authority to proceed, we will, um, have those done before April as well. Uh, so that's really it. Those are the three basic, uh, areas of changes that we want. Uh, I did, in prepar- in preparation for this, I, I did pull out our original, uh, Gould Manor remediation requests, which I believe is done in June for the nine forty-five. And, and I, I, not to stress it too much, but a lot of those numbers were, as we said then, were estimates. And I think our estimates were pretty good, uh, except for the remediation, which we couldn't determine until we actually uh, ripped up some of the fields and that sort of thing. So, I was surprised at those, uh, that, that finding. Uh, but other than that, I think, uh, the rest of it is, is pretty close to the numbers that we originally, uh, estimated. So, with that, uh, you may have also received, I am also told that there was even more backup that was requested by the Board of Finance, which has also gone out this afternoon. Uh, and when I look through those, those numbers are just, uh, background for how we came up with the latest numbers. Uh, one of the rea- one of the reasons why we are now requesting it at this time as opposed to earlier is, uh, I only wanted, however difficult it is to come back and ask for more money, it's much more difficult to ask for it twice. And so, uh, I wanted to be a lot closer to, uh, getting our arms around everything that's being done, which is why we're only coming in once. I don't expect to ever be before you on this issue again. And, uh, with that, I'm, I'm more than happy to take questions.
Thanks, Tom.
Sure.
Madam First Selectwoman, do you have anything you wanna say or?
No, well, I just wanna say, um, I'm sorry, I, um, I apologize. Um, yes, as, uh, Mr. Bremer said, you know, obviously some of these things, uh, were uncovered during a project, which is, which is unusual. That happens uh, many times when you're working on things, um, things come up. Uh, you know, we didn't think about the fencing and bathrooms at the time. You know, we're more focused on the remediation of the entire park and it, it was a lot, but once we kinda got through it, you know, uh, Bremer was going back and forth, uh, to the, to the site quite a bit and said, you know, gee, we didn't think to ask for the funding for the fencing and bathrooms, um, and here we are making this park so beautiful and pristine, we should go the whole way with it. So, uh, that's why we're coming back. And I know that's something, uh, Tom, that you had mentioned, you know, about other projects, you know, let's do the whole, let's go for the whole kit and caboodle when we're, when we're there. So, um, this is, uh, this is why we're here, asking for this. So, I'm gonna open it up. Go right ahead.
Thanks. Uh, so the, the expansion of scope here, Tom, um, of kinda new items as opposed to new information from what you've laid out, I take it to be the perimeter fencing and the bathrooms. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is the perimeter, how old is the perimeter fencing in the bathroom? Do you know? How long have they lasted?
I wanna say, I don't know, I, I don't, I don't have a specific date, but my gut is maybe fifteen years, fifteen to twenty years.
Yeah, I, I'd like to get, as we move forward, I'd like to know that because as you know, we'd like to kinda get the age of the bonds in, in line with the age of how long the asset's gonna be. So I don't wanna bond things for twenty years that are gonna last ten, right? Um, so, so I'd appreciate knowing that. The bathrooms you're saying, it, it's not, I, I also don't, it's not just cosmetic that you're working on, correct? Are you?
That's correct. That's correct. I mean, seventy-five thousand will get, will get the, the full exterior will be done. Uh, but the interior needs some serious work as well. We're gonna put tile in, that sort of thing. New, um, toilets, all that kinda stuff. Um, and to the extent, yeah, I don't even know if there's air conditioning there or not. I don't think there is, but we'll need new ventilation.
I wouldn't think so.
Yeah, I need, there's ventilation and fans and stuff. So that'll all be replaced. So it'll, it'll be a lot nicer than what it is now.
It'd be interesting to hear what comes back from the park and rec report that's ongoing right now, because I know from having been involved in the Little League for many years, most of the places have porta potties as opposed to like permanent bathrooms, like.
You're right.
What's, uh, is our goal here, do you know? I mean, is Mr. Calabrese, I think I see him on here. Mr. Calabrese, has there been any discussion about those type of issues at the various field locations?
Uh, just preliminary. I mean, one of the biggest complaints we get are the locations that have just the porta potties. The comfort stations, the ones that have the comfort stations are, uh, typically the ones that people like to use more often than not.
Shocking, right?
Yeah, exactly.
But, um, and the perimeter fencing, is it gonna be different perimeter fencing than what's there now, Tom? Do you know?
Different in what sense? I'm, I'm not sure. I, I mean.
The look of it, uh, uh, the look of it, the height of it, is it gonna be, you know, sometimes I know with these ball fields and things, and quite honestly, my kids never played at Gould. Um, the fencing wasn't done quite right so that the balls would actually go over those fences on occasion and, and, you know, ding cars and things like that. I just wanna make sure we're thinking this through.
Well, I think the fence, I know the fencing that's there's now, when you, if you're standing it on the street and looking at the ballpark, the ex- the perimeter fencing near the ballpark is very high. I wanna say it's at least sixteen feet. It's very.
So too, yeah.
So those fence, when I say we're replacing that, that's what we're gonna replace it with, the same that we have. There is other perimeter fencing that's no more than four feet high, three or four feet high. Uh, but those really aren't located near the ballpark, so.
Yep.
I have assumed that we're replacing it at the same level, the three or four foot high, when it's not dealing with the, uh, ballpark. But remember, this is perimeter fencing, not. But remember, this is perimeter fencing, not the perimeter fencing behind the home plate, or that's, we are replacing some of those.
Yeah. And I, and I was over there, I drove over there today, today to kind of walk around and get a little bit of a sense of it myself. The steps to the ball field from like the, 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 the street are pretty bad. Is that going to be handled? You know, what's DPW doing around the surrounding of the, of the field, as you said, to make it, to do the job right once, right?
Well, when you say the steps, you're talking about the steps off Crestwood?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah.
Well, I'm asking DPW, and they've committed to replace those and replace, I don't know if you noticed, the sidewalk along there too is kind of, it's kind of bled into the street. And I hate that because people will park, you know, they just pull up their car and they just crush the sidewalk kind of thing. And I want to have more of a curbing there.
Yeah.
And more, more of a, there's a really nice stone wall, I don't know if you've noticed, but there's a really nice stone wall, which I don't want them to touch. I want them to clean that up a little bit and spruce it up. And I think the steps you're talking about are built right into that stone wall.
That's right.
I want them, I want them to replace those steps because they're beat up as well, I mean, they look like they're beat up as well, so, and they've committed to do all that. But that's, that's really more leaning on DPW to do outside of this, this money that we're talking about here, just so you know.
Yeah, no, I was thinking of that, and, and one of the reasons is I, I live near some ball fields here, and sometimes it's very difficult for, and I'll make an assumption here, grandparents to kind of navigate. And if, when you build a park like this, you get a lot of people that come and watch the various events there, and it's, it's kind of an accident waiting to happen. I see Mr. Baldwin's on the phone, you know, these trip and fall incidents. So I just want to make sure we do it right. There's also been some questions regarding the pickleball and the tennis area and that. My understanding, Tom, is that's not an increase in scope here. It was always that we were going to do that, but that you got some additional information which raised the cost there. You, you kind of alluded that to me in a brief discussion that you and I had over the last couple of days.
Yeah, I think one of the problems we had, and Anthony certainly can chime in if he feels he needs to, but one of the problems we had when we were redoing the tennis court, right? You know, the tennis court, as you're standing at the ball fields, it's up kind of on the left side, is one of the things we noticed right away with the, when the tennis court guy was out to rebuild it, we had a real drainage problem there because it's right next to a hill, basically, and water was coming off the hill and was flooding into the tennis court and soon to be pickleball and basketball court. So, so we had engineering redesign the drainage system over there, which really was really at the time, pretty much nonexistent. So we had to put a drainage system in so that when we rebuilt it, it will last, you know, following up what you said earlier about how many years. We don't want to be here five years from now, six years from now with a bunch of cracks and water problems. So part of the, part of the, the reason for the overage on the tennis court was, in order to get the drainage system in in time so that the tennis court and pickleball courts could all be rebuilt in a timely fashion so that they're ready to go in the spring, we had to get the drainage in. We couldn't do that in-house quick enough. So the tennis guy disagreed at the same cost that it would be for the town to do it in-house, that he would do it on his own as well. So that's part of the reason why we have a little bit of overage on the tennis side.
And, but Tom, you keep on saying rebuild, so those type of facilities already exist, so it's not like we're expanding just the scope, is that correct?
That's correct. And I think originally, we had always talked about two tennis courts. And then we went to, there was going to be a little bit too much money and we, and we didn't have enough space to put it all within, there's a stone wall that's up there as well. And for two tennis courts, we'd have to expand, we'd have to bring the stone wall closer to the ball fields. We really didn't want to do that. So what we did was, instead of two tennis fields, we went, tennis courts, excuse me, there's one tennis court and a pickleball and basketball court, because that will all fit. So, but outside of that, no, we haven't expanded anything, we haven't added stuff that we weren't originally contemplated.
Did that area need to be remediated anyway? Was that all going to be dug up, or was that just because we're redoing the park in general here?
Yeah, the remediation did not go up into that area.
Okay.
Fortunately, because then it would have raised even more costs, but no, no, we didn't have to remediate that area.
Okay. But it was part of the original design that was approved back in June as part of redoing and the rehab of the park.
That's correct.
Mr. Calabrese, do you know how old the existing tennis court up there and all that kind of stuff is as we talk about this and, and some of the, the details behind this property, kind of to my earlier question?
Yep, that tennis court, I believe, was redone in 2007.
And is that typical of how long we're getting out of tennis courts at this point?
Every 10 to 12 years, a tennis court, an asphalt tennis court should be replaced. This one obviously has exceeded that by a few years, but-
And the activity up there for, you know, tennis and pickleball and all that warrants these courts, is that what my understanding is? I understand there's a waiting list for some of this stuff too, is that right, to use the facilities?
I don't know about a waiting list, but they are very popular, both tennis and football.
Yeah, I had heard something about pickleball, you had to schedule well in advance or something, somebody had told me that. I'm not trying to lead the witness here, that's just what I was told.
I wouldn't be surprised because I always, I'm more of a tennis player than I am a pickleball player, but there's pickleball people there all the time wanting to get on those courts. So I think, I think there's a real demand for pickleball courts.
Tom, at your advanced age, playing tennis, I'm only teasing.
It's quite all right.
Mr. Calabrese, probably a better question for you, talking about $35,000 here for temporary fencing, why wouldn't you go? I'm not trying to jack up the cost here, I just want to understand, why is permanent fencing not the way to go? What's the cost differential there? I've never understood the, do we use the facilities for different things other than baseball? Is that why? What's-
It was actually when we reconfigured those fields back in 2014, it was part of the agreement with the neighborhood to only have temporary home run fencing so they could still use the hill for sledding and anything else that they wanted to do for the offseason.
Got it. So we're taking into account what the agreements with the, with the neighborhood was?
That's correct.
Okay. The, how, I see Mr. Baldwin's on here. I assume the rest of the bond resolution, Mr. Baldwin, other than the amounts, has not changed?
I've been assuming that as well.
Jim?
Yes, sorry, Tom, say that again?
Oh, Mr. Sastrom's here.
I think, I think we have John Sastrom on the line, right?
Great, I didn't know whether you'd gotten on yet. Hey, John.
Yeah, I have. Yeah, no, the, the only change in the resolution is the, the only change in the resolution is the amount, and obviously the explanation at the beginning that we changed the amount. So it's just the addition of the $400,000.
Okay, thanks. And I saw by the-
450, excuse me.
Yeah, no, I understood what you meant. I saw by the document that was sent over today, Mr. Bremer, that the vast majority of these funds have already been committed, the 900 and some odd is already essentially committed, correct?
That's correct.
Last question for me, the work on the field itself where you said, we dug up and we found that it wasn't done correctly a number of years ago, was that a decision made to do it that poorly back then, do you know? Or was it, did we get scammed by a contractor?
My recollection of when these fields were built, and I think they were more than 10 years ago, was, they were built by an outside contractor that was, that was contracted to by the Little League people. They weren't town, and it wasn't a town managed project. So I'm assuming that since we really didn't have oversight over the project, which I think in hindsight, as I look back, you know, obviously, I wasn't here for those 10 years, but it was definitely a mistake because who knows why they did what they did if we're not managing the project? I don't really have anybody in the town I can point to saying, what were you thinking of? But it's, it was very apparent, because I stood there when I got the call, you got to come down and see this. When I came down and saw it, it was, once they scraped off, say, four to five inches of topsoil and stuff, I could see construction material, I could see, it was gray, it was a very bad substrate. It wasn't the typical sandy substrate that you'd expect, it was rubble. And as the guy said, they did this really wrong, and, you know, what do you want me to do? That's when the decision was made that we're not going to just build on top of this so that we have another bad field, we're going to fix it. So that's what we decided to do.
And Mr., thank you, Mr. Bremer. Mr. Calabrese, I do recall there have been complaints about the, the drainage at that field that, that I remember that, you know, people said, hey, the fields look nice, but they don't drain real well. Isn't, is that true? I mean, is that-
That is true, yes.
Uh huh.
Or was-
Yeah. What else am I not asking here? What's, what do I need to know as we go forward? I mean, this is a large increase. I do have to say, Tom, you'll recall when you came forward earlier this summer, I had said I was, A, as, as the First Selectwoman said, I want to make sure this is done right, because too many of these projects, we've been penny wise and pound foolish in the past, I fear. And B, I, I was concerned that, I questioned you on the 950, right, back then. What else don't I know about this? Is there anything else? And you're confident that this is the right number, and like you said, you guys aren't coming back for more again?
Yeah, I think, I think normally, I would, I always, I'm very cautious about numbers in terms of what might happen. But I, I think now, what I said earlier is absolutely true, which is, let's wait, I want to find out, what else don't we know? And I think now, we know everything, and that these numbers are really good numbers. And you're absolutely right. I think in my aggressive trying to keep numbers down, we did as best as we could with, given the numbers that I was putting out. But I also felt like, look, if the number's over, the number's over, we'll deal with it, and this is how we're dealing with it. Part, I think I've said before, part of me is thinking, gee, if we came in with the original number, maybe we'd need some more money for some unforeseen reason. So, you know, I, although this is, it's always difficult to ask for more money, I feel, I feel good about the fact that we really are coming in at a very reasonable number to do all the things that we'd like to do. And I also recognize that, look, the town may not have the stomach or the will to, you know, do the perimeter fencing and do the bathrooms over and that sort of thing, and I understand that. You know, as Brenda's heard me say before, I don't have a dog in this fight, it's really just, what do we want to do? But I look at it like, I think if we do all these things, this will be a field that, you know, has been closed for a couple of years, it will be completely remediated and, and it'll be something that we can all stand there and be proud of at the end of the day, or come April. So, and that's the goal, that was, that was the goal when we started, and that's certainly the goal as we finish, so.
Well, the projects that you're, yeah, and the projects, the, the fencing in the bathrooms, you're basically saying, we either do them right now, or we're going to be doing them in short order anyways. What, is that correct?
Yeah, I think that's a fair statement. So, you know, if we're going to do it, I'd rather do it and get it all done, and then I don't have to go back to Gould Manor for years, as opposed to, well, now we got to go back, and now we got to do the perimeter fencing. And then after that, now we got to go back and do the bathrooms. I mean, I'd rather just do it and be done with it.
I mean, I don't, I, I certainly am not one for spending money early, but my concern here is Gould Manor is just the tip of the iceberg of the projects that we're going to have to manage over the next 10 or 15 years in this town. Whether it be whatever goes on a penfield, whether it be the fill pile itself, whether it be the paving that we're going to have to manage, whether it be some of the other remediations, whether it be some of the items they're talking about on the, on the schools, that's kind of the way I'm looking at it a bit.
Well, then I think in, in those terms, we, all those things are not going to be started now.
Right.
We're not managing them now. Whereas this, I can get this all done by April, I'd rather get this all done by April and then not have to deal with it again.
Yeah. I, I don't want to belabor this. Mr. Calabrese, do you have anything to add to this, anything further to add to the discussion?
No, I think Tom gave a pretty concise description of what's going on at the project now.
Okay. DPW on, do they have anything to add, anything that they're concerned about? Are they on this call?
I don't think anyone's on.
Okay, but they've agreed to do the work around, like you said, where the sidewalks are, the steps, the stone wall and the curbing.
Yep.
And that'll be done in the spring as well, Tom?
Well, I want to try to get it done before April. I'd like to get it done.
Weather permitting, right?
Right, weather permitting, yeah.
All right, thank you for the thorough review, much appreciated.
No problem.
Madam First Selectwoman, I'm all set.
You're on mute.
Before I move to a vote, I'm going to open it up for public comment if anyone on the line would like to make a comment or ask a question. Okay, seeing none? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number nine is to approve Board of Selectmen meeting dates for calendar year 2022. January 3rd, 31st, February 7th, March 21st, April 4th, and the 18th, May 2nd and 16th, June 6th and the 20th, July 11th and 18th, August 1st and 15th, September 12th and 19th, October 3rd and 17th, November 7th and 21st, December 5th and December 19th. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any questions or comments, Tom?
No, I'm all good, thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Our next item is to consider an act on tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector in the amount of $27,808.44. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any comments or questions, Tom?
All good, thank you.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And we don't have any other business before the Board of Selectmen, although we do have to vote to go into executive session.
I'll make the motion go into private executive session to go through litigation matters.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everyone. So I see the meeting is locked and Dave Kelly will-
This session is no longer being recorded.